I think you all are probably aware of the reason we are here today. There has been a push from some within the legislature to call a special session of the legislature. And we are opposed to that. We are opposed to that because COVID is raging across West Virginia right now. You all know the numbers, I don't need to share those with you, you cover them every day and you cover them well. Our hospitals are at or near capacity. And people are literally dying across West Virginia. So this is a very serious situation, a very serious public health situation. And we do not believe that this is the time in the midst of this public health pandemic. To call a special session to stop COVID mitigation efforts. This is a time when we need to be doing everything we can to corral support for public health. And for our hospitals, our medical leaders who are trying to save us, even save us from ourselves at some point. So the question for us is, you know, who should, who should be leading us right now? And we think our, our medical, our public health professionals ought to be leading us right now. And if we were to open the can of worms, it would be a special session and allow politicians to lead during a pandemic, especially right now as things are so bad. That's just a door that we do not at all feel comfortable opening right now. So I want to turn things over now to Ron Stallings, a doctor and Senator from Boone County. Doc?
Steve, thank you and very well said, I might add. Just a little background, I'm not sure people understand it's not in the health arena just what's going on right now. I had a patient that had a four wheeler accident. That was sent to Lexington, Kentucky for trauma, for trauma care. He couldn't get into any place around here because of the excess of COVID patients and lack of ER space, et cetera. I have a patient that was transferred from Boone Memorial Hospital. The only place they could go for an ICU bed was Dayton, Ohio. The ambulance service was tied up that length of time transferring him from Madison, West Virginia to Dayton, Ohio. These are the normal stories now. One of my friends, colleagues at Boone Memorial said they sent a patient to Michigan. Now, the folks in other hospitals have texted me and said, what used to be an ER, or not an ER, but an operating room, recovery room is now a makeshift intensive care unit with people on ventilators. And went on to say that, you know, not only are these patients real sick, but they don't have adequate respiratory therapy and adequate nursing, even though they're trying their best. So we, this COVID Delta variant is seven times more contagious than the original COVID-19. This variant is that much more contagious. And in fact, in social settings, when I'm talking to public health people, infectious disease people. Basically what they are saying to me is you either are vaccinated or you will get this Delta variant. That's how contagious it is. And as we all know, and we've heard again and again. This is a pandemic right now of the unvaccinated. It's a pandemic of the unvaccinated. If you remember back before we had the vaccine. And we, and I remember Clay Marsh talking about, look, we're gonna have to do a little dance. That is depending on how the community spread is, et cetera, we may have to close down things. We may have to require masking and things like that. We're there, folks, we're there. It's, I think back then, I think it was like if it was 4% positivity, it's 18% positivity. And so instead of putting obstacles and hurdles in front of our public health and health system in general, we should be supportive and listen to the experts. And this will not go away. This will not go away until we reach some type of herd immunity. And herd immunity, of course, is when either by getting the virus and developing your own immunity. Or by getting vaccine vaccinated. You get up to 70 or 80% of the population vaccinated and that protects the people that are not vaccinated. But we're just right around 50%. We're one of the least vaccinated states in the country. And therefore, not surprisingly, we have among the most highest infectivity rate or contagiousness. So we're, we're in a pickle here, folks. And this thing about, you know, going into special session and, and doing away with well thought out CDC guidelines. Is, is, it's amazing to me we're even thinking about, to be honest with you. I'll leave it there for now. I certainly, you know, entertain questions and may come back and even talk a little bit more, but I agree totally, we should not be in a position where we're in session and allowing folks that do not have medical knowledge or have medical knowledge and don't care. You know, that's a big deal. And again, we know, we know that kids need to be in school where they can learn. But we can't just, you know, throw these kids out there who 12 and under can't be vaccinated without any type of protection. So we should be, as fast as you could, go get a vaccine. Go get a vaccine to protect the people that cannot get a vaccine and that need to be in schools. You all know about the child in Kentucky that they announced on the morning news had died. Again, you know, these, this virus can be deadly. It might not be as deadly in kids, but it still can be deadly. And so, you know, again, with, with the freedom that we have requires responsibility, responsibility to the people of West Virginia, the people that we love.
Thank you, Doc. We appreciate you taking time to be away from your patients and be with us. And yeah, we'll get to questions here in just a minute. But first I wanted to turn it over to Senator Richard Lindsey from Canal County. Rich?
Yeah, sure. I mean, the first thing I'll say is that I guess back in the 2020 session, session because of Doc Stallings amendment, we were able to put money aside in the budget for COVID-19. So it, you know, Doc's been on point from, on this issue from the very beginning. And to follow up with what he said, it is, or it was unsettling to me to read or hear rumors about any type of special session that would effectively prohibit businesses, school boards, state boards of education, or universities, any entities prohibit them from protecting their customers or their employees or their students. It's irresponsible. Not only is it unsettling, but I believe it's irresponsible of any elected official to propose or suggest any type of legislation along those terms. You know, I, I heard Senator Baldwin say this morning, you know, it, it's almost as if that the Democrats are taking a Republican position and letting businesses do what they should do to protect their employees and, and, and customers. And yet there are, the folks who, who are demanding a special session are Republicans. I don't know where that comes from and I don't understand it. But I, I just can't see why, what, why anyone would want to do anything like that when in fact we should be supporting our hospitals, we should be supporting our healthcare providers. That's the legis, if you want to call a special session, that's the way to do it. So I, I, I think that, that, you know, I stand with Senator Baldwin and Senator Stallings and the rest of our caucus and and telling the public that's where our caucus is. And especially when you've got, I mean, we, Doc Stallings was talking about a patient of his there in Boone, but it was in the paper just yesterday how Princeton Community Hospital and Mercer County can't, they don't have beds for patients down there. So it's crushing our rural hospitals. I know here in Canal County, they're having significant issues with staffing shortages to take care of patients of all kinds. So we're not only talking about the patients who are unvaccinated and find themselves in hospitals. And all the effects and impacts that has on, has on the healthcare system. But patients down the line who need assistance, who need care, who don't have COVID but can't get it here in West Virginia. Because folks are walking around and are, and are given given the belief by some elected officials that they don't need to be vaccinated. Or misinformation about masks. And I think that again, you know, that, that's not what, that's not what we should do as leaders. To lead, sometimes you have to tell people that no, you need a vaccination and yes, you have to wear a mask and and it's not a constitutional right, one way or the other, that's been violated. So actually I was thinking, you know, in, in response to you know, folks who are calling for this special session potentially. You know, it reminded me of the greatest generation, how they're heralded and they should be, our grandparents and our parents. They survived the depression, they won a war, but they also accepted rationing of fuel and materials and, and food. They didn't stand out on a corner and demand a constitutional right to a full loaf of bread. And it's because we were all in this together and it was for the greater good. And I, and again, I think if the population isn't there, it's incumbent upon our, the elected officials regardless of party. Because COVID doesn't care if you're Republican, independent, Democrat. Regardless of party, we should all band together and do what's right for the public. And, and issuing statements suggesting a special session for legislation that would prohibit businesses, universities and boards of education from, from taking care of their own. It's just the, the wrong direction.
Thank you, Senator Lindsey. I believe Brittany's sending out a message there to everyone asking if you'll seek recognition, if you have a question and we'll move to that time now. So if folks have questions, please just speak up and we'll do our best. It's like Brad's got the magical hand wave going there. All right.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for making yourselves available. As I read, I think maybe an unofficial list of delegates and senators who have asked for the special session. It, it doesn't really look like the number required to put it over the mark to actually make it happen. So I wonder about the briefing here today, is it, is it just to be on the record and get a counter message out that some words of caution?
Yeah, I mean, I think you're right. The numbers are not there. I can't speak to the House, but I can speak to the Senate. The numbers are not there in the Senate and that means it's bipartisan, you know, against this. I think in terms of timing, I, I will just say that I think it's important, I felt it incumbent to speak up because COVID is raging right now. You know, I'm afraid that people aren't taking this as seriously as they need to. You know, my, my son started preschool today, so I'm a, I'm a ball of nerves and so many other parents are. I think it is incumbent upon us, as Senator Stallings said, as Senator Lindsey said, to all do our part to take responsibility to defeat COVID. And if we don't even see it as a threat or see it as an enemy or think there's anything that we can do about it. You know, if we just throw up our hands and say, you know, well, there's nothing we can do at this point, then I think we have failed in our duty. So the point of speaking out today is to take a stand and say, this is serious. People are in the hospital, they're in the ICU, they're on ventilators, they are dying. I mean, at our local task force meeting just the other day, our hospital pled with our community. Said we have more COVID patients than we have had throughout the entire pandemic right now. And right after we got off the call, two of those patients that were on vents died. So this is affecting our state in drastic, dramatic ways. And we wanted to take a stand to support those who are trying their best to save us.
I might chime in also. It's important for the public, I think, to hear from people you know, with a scientific view. And because all, all I get are emails, call a special session, stop the mandate. You know, you don't hear from the general public who I think is the silent majority, if you would. That say, you know, gosh, I, I can't wait to, you know, get my booster shot. Or I can't wait until kids under 12 can get vaccinated. So I think being, you know, when you see all the anti-vaxing, anti-masking social media, then I think we need to answer that in a, in a real way. And I think that's another, one of the reasons we want to, to do this and get on record.
Thank you, Brad.
Yeah, I see Phil Kabler's hand up.
Okay. Sorry, Phil, it's a little dark. I'm having, I don't see you very well.
Yeah, usually tilt my screen up back when the governor would take my questions during his briefing. I forgot to tilt it up for optimum viewability, not, not that there's much to see. I think one question is, a lot of people have asked, where have the Democrats been during all this COVID surge? It seems like it's been conspicuous in your silence. How do you respond to that? And also, do you have any call for the governor to, to take any more proactive steps to attempt to control the spread of the virus?
I'll take, I'll take a first stab at that. At any public forum or any office forum that I am in, I certainly talk about the serious nature of, of this huge pandemic getting worse by the day. And so, you know, every opportunity I've had, I was at the racing Labor Day rally and, and was on record there talking about the necessity. And in fact, in that group got a nice round of applause when I talked about you know, the necessity and sometimes requirements for vaccines and requirements for masking. And any other mitigation, mitigation strategy. So, you know, and when, you know, we received calls from the other lead, the Republican leadership saying, my goodness, you guys got to stick together because, you know, there's a lot of folks on the Republican side that you know, it's, it's a closer margin of error over there where several very important people, very knowledgeable, want us not to allow a special session. And so, you know, we, I think we stepped up to the plate there and said, we're, you know, we're, we're with the few Republicans so that we won't get our whatever, three fifths majority in order to call in a special session on the, from a legislative standpoint. So they could have counted on us and we let them know we were pretty firm.
Thank you, Doc. I would just say, Phil, in response to your question, you know, where, where have you been? I found it very important and I've, I've placed a lot of stress on a local community response throughout the COVID pandemic. I lead a couple of local task, task forces. Is that the proper plural usage? Task, two task forces. And that's a community collaboration effort. I think that's where you can make a real impact. And so, you know, we, we do that on a weekly basis. We've also, I mean, we've taken proactive steps on a statewide basis when it has been prudent and important to do so. You know, I, I do not think it is helpful for politicians to step forward and beat their chests during a public health pandemic for political purposes. So, you know, you're, you're not seeing us doing that. And you're not, and that's one reason we don't want to see a special session happen. Because that's what the content of it would be. You know, as Doc mentioned, we are receiving a significant amount of emails and phone calls and Brittany can attest to this as well. From folks on a daily basis who feel very strongly about this. They think this is the right thing to do. They think their, their freedoms and their rights are being infringed upon. And I appreciate them speaking up. But at some point, somebody has to be the adult in the room. And stand up for what the right thing is, not just in the moment politically, but the right thing in terms of the health and wellbeing of the state. So in terms of the second part of your question about, you know, do we think more can be done? Absolutely. To throw up our hands at this point and say, well, you know, the surge is upon us, it's just gonna have to be that way. I, I get some of that frustration. Because I think, you know, the executive level feels like they've done all they can and folks just aren't taking the vaccine, folks aren't wearing masks. But at the same time, there is always something you can do. You know, I've heard that from many people, including the governor himself. And I think there are absolutely things that we can do to mitigate COVID. And so that's why I agree with Senator Lindsey, we ought to be talking about things we can do to mitigate COVID. Not calling a special session to get rid of tools to defeat COVID. I, I think we are just headed the opposite, in the opposite direction as we should be.
Phil, just to follow up on, 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 on your question, I'll add to it. I mean, and you know, Senator Baldwin is pretty humble as far as being out in front of the issue and, and, and taking a, a community approach. I mean, he puts out there pretty, pretty, he works with and puts out in the public what he does with the task force down, down there in Greenbrier County. And how he works with them and trying to figure out ways to address this issue. It may not get picked up, but it is happening. And I know that a few months ago that we, when we found out or heard, when it became public news that, for example, Tennessee was gonna outlaw all vaccines, I'm pretty sure we sent out a press release, it just never got picked up by anybody. So I think that, you know, we've attempted to go out there, but I think here more recently, it's, it's just become, as Doc said, it becomes our responsibility to, to, to even be more forceful with it. And make sure that the public knows that the facts about COVID and how to, you know, how to mitigate it. And again, just to, just not step in the way of businesses and schools and universities who are trying to all they're trying to do is protect their employees and their customers and their students. And I can't think of anything less worthwhile to do. Or more hurtful rather than to suggest to the public, we need a special session to prohibit them from doing that. When we've got, you know, 813 folks hospitalized, 250 on the ICU and 132 on life support. And rural hospitals that don't have beds open. And, and major, you know, hospitals like C A M C having a difficult time to keep up with their patient load. So I think we've been out there, I think we put it out, out there to the public. I just don't think it's always been picked up. And right now, because we are in a health crisis as a state, it, it's getting more coverage. And then it's our duty to, to respond and let the public know where we stand. And, and, and again, to, to what Doc said, to join Republicans in the state senate who don't want a special session either. So the public knows it's bipartisan in that respect and that, and that we're unified.
Again, we have, you know, there are mitigation strategies that we reach a certain point. Well, we're past those points. So I think we really need to, again, I wish the governor would listen to Clay Marsh more and the public health people more. We need to, you know, probably, again, require indoor masking. Certainly for schools where kids are that can't be vaccinated. We need to, again, if you look back at what they talked about back in January, when we had our first big surge. There were mitigation strategies if you reach a certain level or threshold. We need to use those. We're way past those. And, and, and it's not, and again, this is everywhere. Doctors from Huntington, Dr. Chris Good, who's the, you know, he's up at WVU, but you know, the whole healthcare system is about to implode. And so, you know, the, the sense of crisis should be everywhere. You can't go into a hospital for an injury. You can't go into the hospital for a pneumonia or, or a non-COVID pneumonia or a heart attack. The access to care for people is, so we need to look at those things. Remember when we cut back on elective procedures? We should have been there already. Requiring masks indoors, we should be there. We should restrict sizes, sizes of gatherings. We're past those points and we're not doing it yet. Okay, so again, those are controversial things and I'm, I'm gonna be beaten up as I always am on public health issues. But we should be doing all those things that we talked about and said we should do back at the first surge and we're not doing it.
Brad, do you have another question?
Oh, I do. I don't want to hog them, but if nobody else is volunteering. So my question is, this is over on the House side, but the Majority Leader in the House, Amy Summers, who is a nurse, explained today that her concern is that vaccine mandates among medical providers will drive away capable employees, nurses where there's already a shortage. Some of them who are badly needed, she thinks this will be the tipping point and if they're required to take a vaccine, they'll leave. You know, particularly, I wonder from Senator Stallings' day-to-day point of view, if, if he's hearing those concerns, if he thinks that that concern is valid. And maybe if, if there ought to be some flexibility in what medical staff are asked to do, you know, could they instead agree to put on even more personal protective equipment? Or demonstrate that they've already had COVID-19 and, and provide their antibody report? So anyway, I, I'm just wondering from, from another legislative and medical point of view. Thank you.
So we, I just attended the West Virginia State Medical Association annual meeting. We had several speakers regarding vaccine hesitancy and approaches to mitigating this COVID and Delta surge. And some 60 organizations, 60 organizations, so the hospital associations, the American Medical Association. Basically, they are all in lockstep together stating that there should be required vaccines. Now, you all know that there are certain medical exemptions, okay? I think that's, that's a little bit of flexibility. And then if you're not vaccinated, then, you know, frequent testing. But, you know, if you're gonna quit nursing because you refuse to get a vaccine, that's, that's a tragic loss. But, you know, there's, there are certain, a little bit of wiggle room, I think, as far as, as far as a medical exemption standpoint that you could talk about. But in general, I mean, these, you know, the healthcare people, the people that know what's going on are in lockstep together, 60 major organizations. So I'm in that realm. I, I believe in science. I believe that that's the way we ought to be going. We've had a rare provider in our system with COVID. They've, you know, they've, they've done all the things they're supposed to do and quarantined and anybody around it. So, but that alone, I mean, if you want to look at what's gonna take people away from delivering care is if we don't get our arms around this, this COVID Delta variant huge surge, because people are gonna be out, you know, with COVID. People are gonna be out from quarantining, from being exposed to someone. So I think you lose a bigger part of your workforce if those requirements are not there.
Yeah. If I could jump in too, Brad, just because I, I think you raised a good point. I, I didn't get a chance to listen to Majority Leader Summers on the radio, but as I understand it, that's the point she made, what you just stated. And I would just respond with, I think hospitals, there's already a nursing shortage and there are a number of reasons for the nursing shortage. And I know that, I know for a fact, Senator Baldwin and Doc Stallings and I, I attempt with legislation every year to try to fix that, okay? But I, I will say this, I think the hospitals have decided that there's a greater risk of a nursing shortage if nurses can't go because they've got COVID. They can't provide care because they've got COVID. So that, so that's what, that's what the balance is. Now I have heard, and Brad, you may want to check on this, okay? I don't know, because I don't live out in Huntington. But I have heard that Capitol Huntington Hospital has decided that if a nurse refuses a vaccine, that they then have to be tested every other day or every week, they have to they then have to be tested every other day or every week. They have to wear PPE. They have to social distance. They have to wear a mask. Now, I think the hospital should decide what they want to do. If they want to provide that alternative, fine. If they don't want to provide that alternative, fine. I'm not going to. The key is, we should not be passing legislation and in code and statute, a prohibition that doesn't take into any consideration those particular alternatives that a hospital or business would want to employ. And and that's the problem. That's where the rubber hits the road. And that's where I think the argument for a special session for legislation that would prohibit everyone from protecting patients, customers, and students. I think that that's just a bad idea, and that's where it falls apart. So, you know, I'm not going to stop Capitol Huntington Hospital, and I don't think legislation should stop Capitol Huntington Hospital from providing that alternative. But at the same time, I'm not going to stop C A M C or WVU Medicine from requiring all their all their employees have be vaccinated. That's not our role. We shouldn't be doing it. Again, especially given the numbers of folks that are ill and on life support and ICU in our state.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Phil, for your all those questions. Did did anyone else have any questions?
Steve, I don't have a question, but again, you know, I was around. I've got a scar on my arm. It's a smallpox vaccine. You know, that was in whatever, 1960 something. 100% of the kids got a smallpox vaccine. We didn't ask whether we could or not have it. We just got it. Same thing with polio vaccines. You know, it's just hard for me to understand with the serious nature of COVID, what all the anti-vax, anti-mask is. I mean, did the Freedom Caucus not exist back in, you know, 1962 or whatever, when I was seven years old? You know, it wasn't an issue. So I don't know what's happened in our society that only 50% of Americans would be vaccinated for a for a killer virus like COVID.
Thank you, Doc. Brad, did I understand that you had a follow up?
Oh, yes. Tell me more about the majority asking you to take this position. Thanks.
Some of us were contact, some of us were contacted by members of the majority that had grave concerns about what would happen if a special session was called. And they wanted to know where we were. They wanted to know what the what the caucus numbers were. So that, you know, again, we wouldn't have to be called in because there is certain fear what would happen in a special session with a with a super majority of Republicans and a significant Freedom Caucus.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. It sounds like those were all the questions. So we appreciate your time and being on with us today. We hope you and your families stay safe. And we thank you for all you all do to try and get the word out there with, you know, information so people can know what's going on and make informed decisions. And I just wanted to thank you all for that. So thank you for your time and have a great day.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.